Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce Mason Bruda, who's gonna come up with me. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. And he's gonna lead us in our pledge of allegiance tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just stay right here. I forgot my glasses. Well, it's with great pride tonight that I'd like to that we are going to recognize Mason Bruda at the board meeting tonight. He's a fifth grade student in Ms. Doubles' room. Oh, and Ms. Doubles is bringing him over there. Thank you. In the beginning of the school year, numerous teachers told Ms. Doubles how lucky she was to have Mason in her class, and she quickly found out why. Mason is an integral part of his classroom community in room 144. Mason's an exemplary role model of what it means to be a flyer in the classroom and in the community. Mason is always looking out for the best interest of his peers. He demonstrates kindness, inclusivity, and is always helpful. Academically, Mason shines because he's always committed to being his best. He works very hard. He never misses due dates. He's always advocating for himself, which is a really important skill. It's very difficult to do, but very impressive, when he's in need of support. Mason is involved in extracurriculars as well. He enjoys playing hockey through the Y. He was selected to represent his fifth grade class on our school leadership council as well. Mason's extremely deserving of this recognition. Ms. Doubles has expressed what a pleasure it is to have him in class this year. And we will be sad to see him move on to the middle school, but we're so excited for the bright future ahead. Congratulations, Mason.
Congratulations, Mason.
Fantastic.
The intermediate building is also recognizing recognizing tonight one of our staff members, Diane Scott. Of Diane, come up. Many staff at Maryvale Intermediate are fortunate enough to say that they've worked with Diane for their entire career at Maryvale Intermediate, and they consider themselves lucky to be able to call her their friend and their colleague. Diane has a kind and caring demeanor with both her students and the faculty. Her friendly, positive attitude is refreshing, and her smile is contagious. She connects with students and staff easily and has a way of making others feel comfortable in her presence. Diane is an excellent teacher who effectively teaches our English language learners. She's patient, kind, always acts in the best interests of her students. She's passionate about teaching and learning, and this is reflected in her students and her students' love of learning because of her. As a colleague, she truly goes the extra mile, whether it's stepping in to help with curriculum mapping, volunteering after-school activities, running an after-school club, or creating materials for grade-level units. Mrs. Scott is always there to help. She advocates for what's needed and is a bright light at Maryvale. Her willingness to listen objectively and offer suggestions has made her a trusted advisor to many. Diane's described as the face of the fifth-grade hallway. Her kind nature and acceptance of all people shines on a daily basis. I can personally attest that Diane is an outstanding educator and friend to her colleagues. What was not mentioned by her colleagues in the comments that they just made were her outstanding choreography skills. I too have known Mrs. Scott my entire time at Maryvale Intermediate, and one of my most fond memories will always be our talent show, where Mrs. Scott choreographed the whole dance for our staff. She held morning meetings for weeks before school started so that we could all practice. And if I do say so myself, it was a huge hit. And I think I have it on video, so I didn't share that with you. The saddest part for me, besides not getting to see Diane the other day, but I'm sure we'll run into each other, is that now Mrs. Haftner and myself have to choreograph the dance. And I'm sure the students will be sad as well. Well, obviously, the last thing to end it, that middle schools gain is our loss, but please know that you'll always be an intermediate flyer for us. Congratulations.
You are one of the smileys. Any resident input? I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session in regards to a particular student.
So before you talk, we'll get down to the public hearing.
Can I have a motion for a public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on the proposed 2324 budget open. First, we'll have Dr. London present this, then we'll see if there's any public comment. As many of you know, we've been hearing these last several board meetings, we've taken the last several months to put together a proposed budget for next year. This budget is broken down. Well, actually, let me just go back. Remember, our goals were to maintain core instruction, academic support for students, safe facilities, and a positive learning environment. We also wanted to stay within the tax levy cap and help minimize impact on taxpayers. With that, we have developed a $55 million budget. As you can see in this center column, broken out into our administrative capital and program section. The capital section, because some of our debt service payments from past projects is falling off our schedule, is actually decreasing $718,000. And a majority of our budget increase, as well as our budget is focused on our program. Some of the notable changes we have in our budget this year is a STEM teacher at the intermediate school. We've added a sixth-grade teacher, which will help keep class sizes down. There are deans of students that will now be in place for both our middle school and our intermediate school. Our high school will have an ELA teacher to help continue to build a comprehensive honors and advanced placement program. We're actually starting an in-district family support center that we hope and trust will assist our families and children in crisis and really make a connection for them with services that they would need. And lastly, among other things, but the notable ones we've included on our slides are that we've added internal positions that support our musical, our athletics, and a variety of our extracurricular programs, as we've discussed throughout the process. Not only look at the expenses, but we have to have matching revenues overall. Look at that side of our budget. Of course, the budget revenues do include property taxes, which are a $348,000 increase for this coming year. As you can see, our New York state aid is increasing over $3.5 million. And then lastly, on this particular slide, you'll note that our tax reduction reserve is going to zero. These are the proceeds from sales of our two older buildings. And we have, over the last 10 years, kind of staged that use. And our current year uses the last of it. So that particular reserve will be closed at the end of this current school year and won't be available for next year. Continuing with revenues, we do have funds in our reserves that we've continued to use to offset our budget. We have ERS, TRS, workers' comp reserve. We will continue to use at the same level. And our appropriated fund balance level is being reduced to a $557,000 number. Being able to reduce this is helpful to us. Although we had a question at our last meeting in regards to use of fund balance and how can you sustain that long term? It's hard to do that when you use a large amount of reserve year after year after year. Eventually, that dries up. That's why you see the same amounts being used for these other reserves. We don't want to continue to see that increase because ultimately, you're just gonna chew it up faster, and it goes away sooner. And the same with our appropriated fund balance. So we're able, in this particular year, to drop that back, which will help sustainability and our use of fund balance for years to come on this particular revenue line. In the end, we're gonna have, there'll be four propositions. The first proposition is simply to come and vote on the 2324 budget. We have a second proposition this year that will be asking the voters to approve an increase in the scope of our current capital project that was originally approved in December of 2021. We'll talk a little bit about this later on tonight in the agenda. But with inflation and changes that we're dealing with, our original estimates from three years ago now, two and a half years ago now, things are changing, and we've needed to increase the scope of the project. The good news is that we still have funds in our capital reserve. We have a capital reserve that still exists that has $1,650,000 still in it. Actually, it has a little more than that, to be honest. But if we use 1.6 million of that capital reserve to offset this increase, our state aid will be used to cover the rest of the increase. So increasing the scope of this project won't require additional tax to be collected the way that will work itself out. The unfortunate thing on this, just let me be very clear, when you go to vote on proposition two, the legal language we're required to say talks about authorization to collect more tax. The truth is, ultimately, the state weren't going to fund building aid, and we had this obligation, you'd have to increase tax. But the state's schedule for us with building aid will cover the difference. So I don't want any voter to come and say, wait a minute, they said sales tax covers it, but this proposition says tax. That's just the legality and the language required on that particular proposition.
And also, another unfortunate thing about these propositions is the length and font that they're printed in.
Oh.
And try to plead with the lawyers to make them, you know, more friendly.
That's true. They are really long. It's like the fine print in any contract or commercial. You name it, it's out there. But in the end, we are asking voters to increase the size of our current project by $6.7 million, also allowing us to utilize more of our existing capital reserve, which will be enough to cover the cost without having to collect more tax because state aid covers the difference. So there's a lot there, but that will be helpful for us in order to maintain the scope in that project without having to scale that back. Proposition three allows us, as a district, to create another capital reserve. We create them and use them, and they go away. We're not allowed to put more money into a capital reserve that's been used. Again, the legality piece. So we're asking that in the event the district will inevitably have another capital project down the road. This would have another capital reserve in place that if, if available, we could put funds into. So at the right time, we could offset the cost of a future project. Lastly, I guess it's not a fourth proposition, but it is the election of a board member. We have one seat available for a five-year term with two candidates running, Jason Byer. Thought I'd see him here tonight. Is it held there? Yes. And Marie Zimmer. So those will be the things voted on on election day, which is Tuesday, May 16th. It's in the afternoon, from noon to nine in our dinner building, just across the parking lot. So please mark your calendars. That's my thought. That is my last slide. So that kind of works through the presentation. But if there are questions, comments, we're willing to hear them.
From here or from there? Were you looking for the comments?
And you, go ahead.
Okay. One, one thing I haven't seen. We had bond issues, correct, before? Do we, do we still? What's our debt? Do you have any idea how much our debt is?
I have our schedules.
Got it.
I'd have to, like, add them all up.
I mean...
No, I don't have the number off the top of my head to tell you, but... Let me see. Our outstanding debt at the beginning of the current school year was $26,139,954.
And what kind of interest rate are we paying?
It's all gonna depend on the bonds. Some of these bonds go back 2012, our 2017, our 2011, where there's an old energy performance contract. So that, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. We schedule that out over 10, 15, 20 years.
So how much of our actual budget is put aside just to pay debt down?
On this particular year, for 2324, is gonna be $4,164,000.
All right, thanks a lot.
Of course.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay. Can I have a motion to open the hearing for the Code of Conduct? All in favor?
Hi, good evening, everybody. So really, just, I would say, three things. We understand rest code. We, under number four, we want to add ski masks and earmuffs back into the code. And then we wanted to try and get an identifier for size of bag. We're allowed to have drawstring, but they're starting, some of them are starting to get quite large and defeating in purpose of So those are the only three things that we have changed this year.
Any questions?
So we added back in that the kids can wear ski masks in the gear.
Cannot, cannot.
Okay.
Cannot. We're having some issues this year with those things.
How big are these drawstring backpacks up there?
16 by 20. Based on the Google searches we did, it's pretty much a standard drawstring, you know, bag.
What is coming in now? How big are those? Large drawstring.
They're called tote bags.
Tote bags.
Tote bags?
Yeah. Over the shoulder kind of stuff.
Any other question?
Any public comments on the Code of Conduct? Mr. Hassett, something to say? No, of course. All right, I recommend that the board approve the financial non-personal consent agenda items one through four as submitted.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
I recommend that the board approve the personnel consent agenda items one through 11 as submitted.
May I have a motion?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
There are two people I'd like to point out. Mr. David Hass, you guys have appointed our new director of facilities, who will join us July 1st. Welcome. We also have a substitute that was approved on our sub-list. Always out of there. Saying that correctly?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend the board approve the application for use of school facilities as presented. This is for the Special Olympics basketball program.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd recommend the board approve the policy update as presented. 7132 is later.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve it, wait a minute, second reading.
All second.
All in favor?
Before I recommend the forwarding of the construction bids, I'd like to introduce Rob Smith, Jerry Young, and Joe Ramey. Like, invite you gentlemen up. Talk a little bit about the bids and the bid environment, the grant, and some of the projects.
Sure. Joe Ramey, Buffalo Construction. Been a construction manager here for the last project. Of course, for this one. So the bids that we had received, that you guys saw the results for, that we're asking you guys to make boards out, were unfortunately over the anticipated budget that we, that we kind of had set for this project, understanding that, you know, we needed to maintain the core of this project, which is a fairly big project. The new gym piece, which is really kind of, you know, revolves around most of that. We did our due diligence. Of course, we de-sold all the low bidders to ensure, of course, they had a full scope of work for this project, understanding that there needed to be some value engineering taking place for the project, which we put a lot of effort and energy in with those low bidders to negotiate those numbers down. So what the recommendation today is based on the low numbers that we received on bid day, understanding that's based on a scope of work that was out to the public. And then ultimately, understanding that we will scale some of that back. You know, the value engineering pieces that we pulled together, the intention was to not affect the overall core of the project, which is really the gym piece. So there's some site work. There's some change in materials that we came up with, tile versus, you know, flooring materials that really don't affect too much of what you're gonna see or, I guess, you know, that I haven't even understood until I really dug into it. So I think the, the project is, the way it's built right now achieves all the goals that the district had intended. And, you know, that's why we put our recommendation in to proceed with the contractors that we had listed.
Any questions? So the, just publicly, so what these guys did to get this project to the bid price is just amazing. So thanks for the work that you put in to make that happen. Essentially, we're not gonna see any difference to what was presented to the, I mean, nothing noticeable from what was presented to the public. I mean, there's some things that were removed to get us down, but it really did a great job in making that happen for us. We appreciate it. And just to reiterate what Steve said, if the voters don't approve the use of existing funds, we're essentially, we will not have Phase Two of this project. It'll stop at Phase One. And it's just the bid environment, the inflation. Things hit us, you know, the stadium. A lot of stuff's happening.
December 2021 is when we approved this project. From there, things have changed dramatically.
Prior to that, you had 10 years of 2% inflation. And then we had a 20% and a 16%. So the cost of everything has gone up dramatically. And obviously, even lead times are up dramatically. So it was, it was just that, we voted in 2020, and there was no, no knowledge that we were gonna have 36% inflation in the next two years.
On the other hand, the project, we're just getting done. We had a really great bid environment.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta look at that. And we had extra money on the last one. We were gonna get stock the fields and the outfield. So, you know, things unfortunately changed, but...
So if the board approves this tonight, construction should start when?
We're hopeful for the 22nd.
But when should folks really start noticing? That's underneath.
Yeah.
When should folks really start noticing?
I would say summertime is when you'll see the, yeah, the major construction and demolition of the existing structure. But site work in front of that building initially, you know, fences will start going up, and you'll notice that, that we're in the district that that one time.
And that's not the only thing in Phase One. There are other things.
Yeah, there's the primary store, the auditorium.
Yep. Performing Arts Center's gonna get a new soundboard, new lights.
Yeah.
So in addition to that, we just put out a new stage. So that's getting some upgrades as well. So the primary show is getting some site work.
Site work and lights.
LED lighting in the, in the parking lots.
Yep. Yeah, again, the focus was to keep that core construction and that core scope of work, which is great, which is...
And the reason why we put the gym in Phase One is to get it done so that kids can get back into it, you know? So that's the reason why instead of Phase Two or whatever, that's why it's in Phase One.
With our lead times, are we still on timeline? Uh, yeah. So I, I believe, you know, the intent is to turn this thing over next August, next summertime basically, for the next school year. There probably are gonna be a couple of components that, you know, we'll be waiting for. I think it's probably gonna be more geared towards HVAC. But fortunately, with the, you know, the length and duration of the construction schedule, I think we'll have those components in time before school opens back up. There's not big, electrical gear would be the other thing, but there's not big electrical gear in this project that would be an item that would be a problem. It's actually be talking about, but not yet.
For four, not one of the larger parts of the bed I saw in here? Was it the electrical?
Electrical package is fairly big. It's, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, but actual gear, larger gear, transformer, switchgear. Yeah, that stuff, that stuff is hard to come by right now.
Now, saying next school year, though, too, you're talking August, September 2024.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, so you're right. Because we are in the story.
It's a full year.
We work fast, you don't work out.
Thank you. Young and Right Buffalo Construction. For the board to make this happen, of course, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'd like to recommend the board approve the, yeah, or the construction bid as presented.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Thank you. I'd like to recommend the board approve the fall 2021 RFPs.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
I'd like to recommend the board approve the employment agreement with the CNASA.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. All second.
Did you get that, she?
All right, so the, the sixth new idea of managing businesses is the non-resident student policy number 7132. And I'd like to recommend the board approve the amendment to number five as presented before we do the entire policy.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept the amendment as discussed.
All second. All in favor?
All right, now I'd like to recommend the board approve the policy as amended.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and our student liaison update.
All right. So as you guys may know, we've started the unified basketball team here at Maryvale. We have been playing great. We're off to a 2-0 start this year with very tight games. We have two games this week, both home, Tuesday, tomorrow at 5:00, and Fri- Friday senior night at 5:00 as well. It's a sight to see. It's fun to watch and play. Are you doing art show? We have the art show coming up next week and, uh, 16th as well, as well as the budget vote. The kids have worked hard this year to create all this art to put on, to display for you guys. We have the penny awards coming up, May 27th, at Shays. Tickets are online at shays.com if you want tickets.
Got my tickets. I'm in the second row, so if we don't win, I'm in range to throw stuff.
We're winning something. Because we were nominated for nine awards this year. So we're gonna win something. So we're going to win something. And throughout the school, I was hearing that everyone enjoyed the color room last Friday, they enjoyed being filled with color and bright ground.
Last Friday, I mean, fifth, we had Culture Day, which was a success. It wasn't much fun last year, much improved, which I was really glad to see, as it's my last Culture Day. It was in the courtyard this year, since the gym will be in construction, so they wanted to do it there. They had some snacks, they had many cultural things, they had activities, they had music, it was really fun, and I was really glad to see everything come together. And the 50-day stash for the seniors was Thursday, May 4th, May 4th. That was a success of music, activities, ask Swanson and Preacher, you had a great time. But, yeah, it's pretty much it.
A crazy dodgeball. I just...
Dodgeball?
I'm sorry, crazy kickball. Everything makes me nervous.
Then half a gym, that is crazy. Half a gym looks very crazy.
Thank you.
The second reading presented to the West Virginia Board of Representatives. Next to the chairman.
Do you want me to have another motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can go back and just say it.
Can I have a motion to waive the second reading for the non-resident student policy 7132?
Motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passed. Erie County School Board update?
I had a legislative meeting, we had a dinner coming up this week. We had a meeting, a private meeting, with Patrick Gallivan, to hear...
Regarding CVA.
Yeah, CVA, his, and probably might approach that for schools, and supplying some funding to schools who might have CVA cases and the astronomical amount of money the school districts face because of these cases. So that was a, an, an interesting meeting to attend, both teams and I were there. Other than that, not much.
Can I have a...
Yeah, sorry. Sorry.
Any resident input?
Well, you'd be, you'd be upset if I didn't say something. My thank you, Mr. D'Angelo, for coming to our Duke meeting. We had all those, most of the superintendents in the areas, districts. And I didn't realize that the Pew has their own buses. That's got to be costly. But I don't even know how much we're paying for buses either. I don't think, I'm sure you did the math before, would it be cost to have one and then...
Yeah, we did study.
It does, it makes sense.
No.
I've been going, I've been coming here many, many years, and I don't want to put somebody on the spot, but I will. Cindy, thank you for all you've done here. You've really been, you've been on this board for a long, long time. Whenever there was stuff going on, you were there, all right? Whether it was a basketball raffles or anything else, you were always there. And personally, as a resident, I want to thank you for all your, your years of service here.
Thank you very much.
Grab. She's got one more meeting. Are you taking her out now?
Wow, the election's, election's May, right?
Yeah, eight years. Now that I'm all teary eyed, thank you very much. Do we need an executive session? Okay. Can I have a motion for negotiations of collective bargaining? Can I have a motion?
He totally threw me out.
All in favor? Thank you.